I hereby call to order this special meeting in committee of the whole. It is Monday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, and the time is eight thirty A M. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin?
Here.
Johnson's ready?
Here.
Anne Hart?
Here.
Bonnie Kim?
Here.
Frank Panzico?
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Here.
Erin Stone?
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Committee of the Whole minutes.
I move to approve the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Committee of the Whole minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minute? If so, okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart? Bonnie Kim? Yes. Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes? Erin?
Yes.
Great, motion carries. So we'll begin the meeting with Facility Development Committee led by Mr. Panzico.
Good morning. We have the next slate of our summer twenty twenty-two construction project proposals. So I hand it off to Cory, I guess. Okay.
All right, good morning. This one should be really short. So the design team has been working hard behind the scenes, architects, engineers, you know, really developing the plans for all three projects next summer. At this point in time, though, we haven't hit any of the design milestones that would generate kind of that next budgetary estimate from Nicholas and Associates. So we'll have to wait till next month for that. But a lot of work has been made. The one thing that we'd like to bring to the board's attention, that we would like to add as an alternative option for next year is at McKenzie, there are two sections of that roof that are in need of replacement. The estimate for that is about three hundred and ninety thousand. And so what we would like to do is instruct the S T R to include that into the design plans for the air conditioning project at McKenzie. And we would like to add this piece of work as an alternative option. That way, the district and the board has some flexibility once those bids come in. And I think for this project, that would be cheaper. So this is some work that's been on our radar. And as we've, you know, contemplated and taken another look at the existing state of the roof and kind of our limitations in any one summer, where projects can be at, we felt like this is a good piece of work to tack on and try and get done. So happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
You have any specific? I just had one quick one then. It certainly sounds like this is being looked at because of logistically, it makes things smoother and better. Is there any anticipated budget advantage, you know, doing more work at the same time, et cetera? It's the noise.
No, I certainly think that, I think anytime you can lump stuff together, there's always opportunities for economies of scale. I think, I think, I think the biggest thing for me is we were going to do this either the following summer or maybe first the two summers out. And just kind of knowing our limitations and that we would be anxious to use McKenzie in future summers, I, knowing the condition of these two sections of the roof, that it just didn't seem like a good idea to potentially close McKenzie, say, two summers out when we would be wanting to use the air conditioning for some of our projects.
So it's something we needed to do.
Yep.
Logistically, it's better to do it at the same time, and you may save a little bit of money.
Yep, that's the goal.
It sounded like a prospector. Thank you. Anything else? Sounds like there was updates for those projects right now? Thank you.
Okay, then we'll turn to S F C and led by Mr. Caesar Ready.
Bye, Sandra, thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
That was very quick.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
So the finance committee, I believe the entire part of the agenda is on the impacted Senate Bill five oh eight. I think Cory's gonna provide a summary.
Yep.
Thank you, Cory.
Yeah, so Senate Bill five oh eight, as anyone that's been involved in the school industry can attest, there's always changes coming out of Springfield. Sometimes, you know, you barely notice what the, something changes and sometimes your head steps in another direction. I would kind of put that bill in this category. On Friday, I had the opportunity to listen in to some of the people that were the creators of this bill and really the reason that they got passed. So a little bit of the background on how this even occurred is that there was a school district that was in two counties. About eighty percent of their, their value, land value was in one county, and they saw hardly any refunds. And then the county that they had twenty percent in, they were seeing, you know, around eighty percent of refunds, and they couldn't figure out why. And it really came down to, at the county level, and we see this in Cook County as well, is how urgently does the board review their job? So if somebody appeals their assessment and everything gets figured out before those final tax bills are calculated, then any reduction just gets spread out over the entire tax base. However, if the process is lagged or if they get behind, or in some cases, there's a lack of urgency or understanding of what their action, how their actions impact all the taxing bodies, then those things get processed as refunds after the, after the fact. And then that comes directly out of all the taxing bodies levy, particularly school districts. And so as they started to work on some legislation, it took them about four or five years to ultimately get passed, but it did have a lot of support. And here are some of the key provisions. So Senate Bill five oh eight, it would be effective for the twenty-one tax levy, which is the taxes that all of us would pay during twenty twenty-two calendar year. It mandates that the county, at the county level, they would add in all prior refunds on top of the board-approved tax levy each year. And while the legislation hasn't specifically divide, defined the lookback period from Friday's conversation, at least at the county level, they're interpreting that as to be November first to October thirty-first each year. And then by November fifteenth, the county treasurer would certify to each school district how much in refunds occurred during that period. Taxpayers would see this show up on their twenty twenty-one second installment, so that would be the bills due in August of twenty-two. And because this is mandatory, there currently is no option and no action necessary required of local school boards. So whether a local, as constructed, whether a local school board loves it, absolutely has disdain for it, there's really nothing that, as it relates to this particular bill that can be done at the local level. And as it relates to District Thirty-nine, the first time that we would potentially see some impact is for our fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. So that said, what kind of impact are we looking at? So in the handout, I've gone back four years, and then I've got an amount for the, for the current year, which is basically two and a half months worth of, of activity. And as you can see, the, the high year was one point two million, and the low year was just under, just under a million. So if you were to look at the specific period that Cook County's suggesting, we've got about six weeks left, and we're at eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in refunds. And when I kind of looked at some of the other years to kind of see what typically occurs in September and October, it, it wouldn't be surprising to see another hundred to two hundred thousand. So I think ending at the end of October with something around a million, give or take a hundred thousand is probably where we're heading. The one thing to note with refunds is that when you think about them, they're, they don't follow a nice, smooth path. There are months and days where it's, you know, seventy, eighty thousand, and then another month, you might only have ten thousand. So things are a little bit all over the place. And I think one of the frustrations, at least on the school district side of things, and the business manager and attorneys we work with, is while there is some level of a little bit of transparency on what potential refunds hang out there in the court systems, it's not anywhere where we'd like to see it. And so for anyone to wonder, you know, what potential refunds are out there across all types of avenues for appealing your taxes, the answer is, and we found this out, or had that confirmed on Friday, there's really just no way to know. So it, it is a interesting situation. And another reference point, so for the twenty twenty actual tax extension that was finalized just a few months ago, the operating funds was fifty-six point eight million, debt service one point six, and giving us a total of fifty-eight four. So if we look at it in terms of, okay, refunds are about a million dollars a year, that's about one point seven percent of our total tax extension as things exist right now. So, you know, not, not, not an insignificant amount of money on, on any level. And one thing to keep in mind as we start our discussion about this topic is when it came time for the governor, at least it was portrayed to me on Friday, when it came time for Governor Presker to sign this, it wasn't a guarantee that he was going to do so. One of the reasons, at least as suggested, was that there was multiple follow-up legislation bills in the works, and that was one of the reasons that he agreed to sign it and that they would clean up some of the things. So while they did mention that there are multiple bills, the one that they were focused in on the most was House Bill forty-one thirty. It was created by the same individual and pushed five oh eight through. So it, as it was explained to me, this isn't a no-one legislator, this is somebody that has some pull. And while I think conventional wisdom is that House Bill forty-one thirty would make its way through this fall, as they dove into the details on Friday, I'm not so sure. So forty-one thirty would repeal and replace five oh eight. The biggest change is that it would make this optional instead of mandatory. And what that would do is it would still be available to local school districts, but it would mean that local boards would have to vote for it every year to add back that So it does put a little bit of it, a little bit of power back in the, on the local level. But one major issue, and one of the things that happened when five oh eight went through is that legislators reached out to, when they were trying to figure out whether they support this, they reached out at the county level to find out if there were going to be any issues procedurally being able to implement such a thing. Obviously, school districts and some of the attorneys in the industry. And one of the things that was, came across loud and clear is unless there are major revisions to forty-one thirty, the fine details and some of the caveats in there pose such, such major administrative issues for the county level, that if they were to not make any changes, most of the counties realistically wouldn't be able to. So, and I know for Cook County, the person that was on there that's in charge of there said so. So I think there's some work to do, it seems likely, but that's something that we're really gonna have to follow, whether they do get something done before five oh eight would actually be enacted for the future. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to discussion about how this might impact us.
Right, so anybody have any questions? That's great summary, thank you, Cory.
I have a question. Oh, so five oh eight was enacted, and it's in play right now? We just don't know how long it's been.
Correct, yeah. So I guess the best way to look at it is it's, it's the law, and that's what the county's going to proceed with until another law supersedes it and instructs them to do otherwise.
Thank you, I have a question. Yeah, I had a couple of quick ones. Just a nomenclature issue, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, what fiscal year are we in now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, so that would be the next budget.
Yep.
And easiest way to ask this question is related to forty-one thirty, but it applies to the five oh eight. Does this go into the tax base, or is it handled like the new property thing where additional money for that year, but it doesn't actually change the long-term base?
Right, so if you look at the handout that I've provided, you know, kind of our baseline each year is that operating funds of fifty-six point eight million that goes up by C P I plus new growth, this particular amount, so let's say it's a million dollars, it would be outside of that, and it's really just specific to that level of year. So if the following year, it was only six hundred thousand in refunds, the one million would come off and they would add six hundred thousand.
So effectively handled the same way that new property growth is, it doesn't, where it changes each year, but the number is smaller, bigger doesn't change the baseline?
Yeah.
Something that doesn't sound like we have to talk about today, but that I'd like to tee up for the future is since this really shifts the tax burden from the people that had a repeal to everybody else, one thing that, that sounds like forty-one thirty along with a lot of other things brings up is that each year, the board could vote on whether it's appropriate for us to do that. And I don't know administratively whether it's like you take the money or you have to take the money and then you rebate it, but to have the discussion of whether it's appropriate or whether it's, it would be good for our, our community that if the taxpayers that didn't have a repeal ended up with a higher tax bill, would it be appropriate on a year-by-year basis for the board to look at whether that, that could then be rebated to those taxpayers and basically make up the people? So just teeing it up for now, it doesn't sound like it's necessary to talk about until we can talk about next year's budget. But I think there's a certain, I think a proactive step by the board each year, whether we accept it or, or not, would be a good way of representing the taxpayers.
Is there comment on what we just said? Because I agree that this sets up a dynamic, maybe it's just tax increase. But I'm looking at the votes that happened in Springfield, I don't know if you know that, Cory, but I'm seeing in the House, well, there are a bunch of those. And they're all unanimous except for one, which has one no.
Yeah, the concept that the money comes in, I, I think is what that vote was about, is the concept of how we as a school district want to spend that money and represent our taxpayers is, is our, our job and a different topic.
I wanted to get a chance to check out the policies as well.
They were, on Friday, they were pretty clear. The people that really paid attention to when this bill went through, five oh eight went through, was the level of support. And I think the way that they had structured it and communicated it appealed to a lot of, a lot of the politicians. But there, there, like I said, there's still some, I think, some cleanup that would give some of the control back to the local level, was what a lot of them were looking for.
Right, I missed a detail in the bill. Does this only apply to schools, or does this apply to all the?
Everybody.
All the government?
All taxing bodies.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So.
Blink by, got the month before.
No, I'm, I, just one other thought. So as it relates to kind of our process and just kind of refreshing everybody, next month committee, we will take our first look at the twenty twenty-one tax levy, and we'll have an estimate and a lot of the background information that we typically look at. And our, our process historically has been to do that in October with a board vote to approve the levy in November. As a reference point, the levy has to be approved and filed by the last Tuesday in December. So our process is a little bit ahead of what is statutory required. So barring any recommendations, that would be the plan we would continue with, and we would continue to keep an eye on all of this legislation.
Yeah, that's helpful. I was trying to do some math that maybe you've already done. So I was trying to figure out, you know, what a million dollars refund, you know, spread out among the taxpayers, the lives per taxpayer, assuming that they had a million dollars of present value? I mean, I'm getting less than fifty dollars.
I mean, if, so the way I'm looking at it is if a million dollars is one point seven percent of our total extension, and this applies to every taxing district, I'm thinking whatever your tax bill, one point, I mean, just rough, rough math, I mean, so.
That's the smarter way to do it. I didn't do that right. Thank you. All right, anyone else wanted to ask? Thank you, Cory.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll move to strategy led by Lisa Schneider-Babes.
Yeah, and I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Kanasong to discuss the strategic plan.
Thank you so much. We are so proud today to be able to present the draft of the strategic plan to the Board of Education in our community. Our purpose today is to review and give the board an opportunity to discuss and provide some feedback before we present officially to the Board of Education next week at the board meeting. So this really is an opportunity for you all to have an early look at the plan. Again, I know we've, we've all been really engaged in this process throughout, but, and to give us some feedback before we present it next week and seek your approval so we can take the next steps that we are planning associated with the plan. So I'm going to share my screen. I will give an introduction, and then we are actually going to share in presenting the goals and strategies. So give me just a second, let me make sure I can do this. So we are presenting our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-six strategic plan. This has been a labor of love throughout COVID and the pandemic while we juggled both the responsibilities and the struggles of the pandemic. We also continue to move forward with our future visioning and planning for our strategic goals moving forward. You'll recall last year when we decided to proceed with what had been put on hold for about a year. We did so with a little bit of hesitation, not sure how we would manage holding these meetings and continuing the really important work we were doing with schooling and managing everything related to the pandemic. I think we did, we, we were not sure. And yet I think at this point, we're very, very happy that we proceeded. It was a lot of work, and we had a ton of engagement from our community and from our stakeholders, so we're really, really happy with that. And we're also happy with the product, which now will help to set the stage moving forward as we climb out of the pandemic and prepare for the next steps in our, our learning and our mission. So we, the board, approved a contract with the Consortium for Educational Change to help us navigate the strategic planning process. You're very familiar now with this color chart to the right, which describes the, the process that we've gone through and will continue to cycle through as we continue to engage with them and to build and refine and monitor our strategic plan. As I mentioned, we had a lot of engagement from our community. It was the board's intention and its goal that the strategic planning process really be built upon community engagement. And so not only did we seek feedback throughout the process from our community, from our stakeholders, our students, our parents, our staff, and our community at large, but we had a core planning team, and that core planning team met regularly to help us evaluate our current strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and then plan for what our future could look like and what our aspirations were in achieving that. So we had board members, thank you to Amy and Lisa, who gave up their time representing the board. We had district administration, principals, C R C representatives, P T O representatives, parents and family representatives. We also had community members, a support staff, union president who joined us. We had District Thirty-nine faculty and staff. We had students, and our students were absolutely amazing. The board recognized them in our last board meeting, and thank you for doing so. And we had District Thirty-nine alumni as well. So our focus throughout really was on the mission, the vision, the values, and our goals and strategies. When we talk about mission, we're talking about who we are and why we exist. When we talk about vision, we really focus on what must we become? We explored and really redefined our values and how, how we should behave in order to accomplish that mission and vision. And then finally, we talked about our goals and strategies. How will we gauge our success, and what will we do differently to succeed and to accomplish that mission and that vision? The core strategic plan's work was spread out over several months. We met on ten different occasions, and there was a lot of work done outside of those meetings as well. In addition, we had stakeholder-provided feedback to the team. That initial, initial visioning and feedback survey, we did a SWOT analysis and sought feedback both through survey and through in-person feedback events and Zoom events as well. We kind of had a hybrid going for those. And then also on the draft strategic plan most recently. The work and the artifacts of all of our efforts are on the District Thirty-nine strategic planning page. You can find that on our website if anyone is interested in looking back and seeing how this has kind of unfolded over the last several months. Our data retreat really dug into all of the data available on our successes, our weaknesses as a district, and our opportunities for growth. The team spent a lot of time digging into these data. And I think as we have gone through, we've learned there's some other data sources that we can continue to use to evaluate our successes as well, based on the chosen goals and strategies. That helped us to create the SWOT analysis, and this really is just an image reminding us of the work that we accomplished there. We talked about our strengths and weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats to our future success. Our stakeholders reviewed that analysis and gave us feedback on this, on the SWOT analysis, again, both online through survey and through some in-person events as well. And then the team really focused in on doing some visioning activities, and that led us to creation of the mission, the vision, the motto, and the values before really turning to look at the goals and the strategies that are identified. So this is our draft one-pager, remember? C E C believes very strongly that a strategic plan should be a one-pager that we can refer to and reflect upon throughout the organization, that we can use then to build our efforts moving forward. And as we live the plan, this should be referred to most readily as what we're trying to accomplish in our improvement efforts. So this is a draft right now, I've marked it accordingly because we do expect a little more feedback, and then we also want to make sure that all the imagery really reflects what we're trying to accomplish here. So I'll present our mission, our vision, and our values, and then the team will really dig into the strategies and goals, which I know is what most are most interested in hearing about. Our mission is, is recodified and really exemplified here in, in what we're trying to accomplish. So a will-met District Thirty-nine education engages, inspires, sorry, engages, empowers, and inspires students to lead academically successful, socially responsible, compassionate, and purposeful lives. And so you'll see that engage, empower, and inspire motto again and again, not only throughout this plan, but we hope it becomes the motto of our district, of all that we are attempting to accomplish as a learning community. Our vision, Willmet District 39 will foster a thriving learning community that cultivates growth through engaged learning, empowered mindsets and an inspired community. And so each of these bullet points again refers back to the mission and also gives us the vision for how we hope to lead moving forward. Under engaged learning, we hope to ensure a strong foundation of purpose, skills and knowledge, provide tailored, real-world learning opportunities through a relevant, inspiring educational model and build on interests and strengths while ensuring complexity and challenge. The team really spends a lot of time talking about this, finding it very important to not only have strong foundational skills, but also aspirations for really rigorous learning moving forward. And empowered mindset, again, as we focus on cultivating growth for all students, we want to embrace continuous growth for each student. To nurture creativity, curiosity and risk-taking, another point that the team really spent a lot of time talking about. And finally, promote a sense of responsibility to address both local and global challenges. And then third, our inspired community. We know that partnerships really help us to succeed and we want to continue to nurture those partnerships. So we want to strengthen relationships between and among students, staff, families and the broader community. We want to prioritize health and wellbeing through an accepting, supportive and representative environment for all students and staff. And finally cultivate a community that embraces and benefits from the unique identities, abilities and perspectives of all members. This really is intended to reflect the board's commitment to diversity and inclusion, while also acknowledging the need to bring everyone together and really engage our stakeholders as we pursue these goals and strategies. And our core values. As a learning community, our core values include a commitment to excellence, respect and trust, inclusion and representation, continuous improvement, risk-taking and a connected community. And the bullets under each of those really describe and define what we mean by those phrases. And this brings us to a portrait of a District 39 scholar. Our team spent time thinking about what is it we hope to see in our students as they progress through our system and as they prepare to graduate from our schools. And so Katie Lee will start us here and then she will, she and the rest of the team will lead us through the, a review of the goals and strategies. Katie?
Thank you, Carrie. As a result of our mission and vision and core values that we just reviewed, the strategic planning team has created this portrait of a District 39 scholar by considering and answering this question. What student qualities for success will our district cultivate as they progress through District 39? This was a labor of love and a lot of conversation about what each one of these descriptors mean. And so we've landed on, and I'll read through the descriptors right now, diligent, confident, creative.
With the mask on the fan, it's a little hard to hear. So could either talk closer to the mic or?
Thank you. So Katie, if you can move your mic a little bit closer. And also speak a little louder. I'll see if the fan can be turned off while we're talking too. Thanks.
Okay, I, is this better?
I can hear, but it's hard.
Yes, sorry. So portrait of a District 39 scholar. We see our scholars to be diligent, confident, creative, inquisitive, resilient, empathetic, a critical thinker, a risk-taker, a collaborator and innovative. Next, our team will share the goals and strategies that you see here in the next slide. Has icons for the five different goals and the corresponding strategy. So first we'll begin with goal one. The goal one is student achievement and growth. The goal is to ensure a differentiated education that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning. Differentiate the strategies are differentiate instruction and supports to ensure a strong academic foundation of challenging, meaningful and growth-oriented experiences for all students. Implement structured staff collaboration focused on data-informed practices to support rigorous achievement and growth for all students. Provide differentiated professional development opportunities to support effective, innovative and growth-focused classroom experience practices.
Some of the examples of the action steps that will be taken to meet this goal. We really identify and hold sacred those staff collaboration times that focus on data review and analysis in order to identify the strengths and needs of our students and to promote student learning. Train all teachers and administrators in a consistent data analysis process. And to facilitate this, the District 39 administrators will be taking the Data Wise course provided by Harvard Graduate School of Education. And will facilitate the implementation of data literacy for helping everybody understand the data that is gathered and use that in a really actionable way to improve student learning. We'll also be working with Atlantic Research Partners to review the special education supports and our other systems of support that help inform needed professional development and resources. We're really looking at how do we meet the needs of those struggling learners? And how do we make sure that we're being effective and efficient with our services? We'll also review our current assessment model to determine the effectiveness and limitations in providing evidence of growth and in, we have a lot of assessments really looking at, are they giving us the information that we need in order to identify growth? And in order to identify those areas that we need to further intervention? All of this is going to be done with, with really the goal of increasing student achievement, that's our focus. Then if we go to goal two, that is supportive community. And the goal that we developed for that is really to cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional and behavioral needs of students. The strategies under that that will help us achieve that goal are to implement a consistent and proactive curriculum addressing social, emotional and behavioral needs of students. Strengthen the, of students, strengthen the sense of belonging, engagement, representation and agency for students through diverse welcoming opportunities for community building, leadership and student connection.
So examples of actions that will be taken to meet this goal include the development and implementation of a social and emotional learning framework based on the CASL competencies for social, emotional learning. And there will be a professional development plan in place to support our teachers as they grow in their competencies to address the competencies. The adoption of responsive classroom, which is an approach to supporting community building in the classroom and really sets the foundation for social, emotional learning across the school district. An analysis of the social, emotional assessment information that we have, those are the DESA and the MESH. And really some training with teachers in a similar fashion with data literacy in the, in the academic goal area, but with respect to the social, emotional goal area and then efforts to support it for interventions based on that data that we have. And then broadening offerings for students both during and outside of the school day where students may connect with others who share similar interests, identities, different abilities and really look at how we can create those student-to-student connections throughout the school day.
Goal three focuses, focuses us on professional community. The goal states that we will foster a professional community that values, supports, develops and retains highly effective staff. Strategies to help us achieve this goal include improve collaborative and shared decision-making structures to strengthen representation, engagement and agency for staff. Cultivate a more equitable and inclusive learning community by developing staff expertise to support diverse learners through differentiated instruction and culturally supportive teaching.
And when considering this goal, District 39 will consider needs such as reviewing current curriculum and the process by which any changes may be made. Regularly review student data to determine if students are making growth at the district level and reporting stakeholders. Develop a system of supports for all students, often referred as the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, which broadens the work of RTI and also the work that we began with RTGI. If everyone remembers, that will encompass the growth as well. Review and allocate resources to ensure that supplemental curriculum to reflect representation of diversity and suggest and implement strategies for promoting connections between and among students and teachers.
Goal four, family partnerships. The goal is to strengthen partnerships by connecting, collaborating and communicating with families and communities to advance teaching and learning. Our strategies include improve school-home communication through consistent and effective strategies, especially those focused on communicating student performance, goal setting and growth monitoring. And implement strategies to better support successful transitions from fourth to fifth grade and sixth, seventh grade for students and parents.
Actions we will be taking to support this goal may include consistent and frequent homeschool communication regarding goal-setting and student progress to be sent from teachers to, or to families. Parent toolkits to support students in different content areas and areas such as executive functioning at home. And gathering feedback about the different grade level transitions in order to improve events such as orientation and different transition processes to better meet student and parent needs.
Goal five, stewardship of resources. The goal is to ensure effective use of resources to sustain practices that promote growth. Strategies include implementing long-term capital planning focused on facility maintenance and examining resources, examine resource allocation practices, including staffing based on best instructional models and.
Examples of actions that could address this goal may include reviewing the five-year capital plan twice a year with an eye towards maintaining current structures, anticipating needs and prioritizing them. Review the process by which building-based projects and needs are determined. They'll develop a five to seven-year prioritized plan and estimated cost and potential completion dates. And monitor legislative adjustments related to proper tax funding formulas, real estate tax appeal refunds and pension cost shifts that impact the 39 available resources.
Actions related to staffing would be to continue to review student enrollment exercises across district to help us in planning for appropriate staff and expanding the work beyond just one room.
Then we talk about what's next. That would be our strategic plan and it is a lofty and ambitious plan. Different from our previous strategic planning efforts where we would take a one-year look each year, add on new initiatives each year. Our hope is that a five-year plan will really provide us that pathway to success and help to ensure that year after year, the improvement efforts are aligned to the previous year's efforts and that we really are able to accomplish these lofty and ambitious goals that we set forth. So in terms of next steps, we plan to recommend with your feedback and consent to date this, the 2021 through 2026 Willmet District Strategic Plan. We'll recommend that to the board for approval next week at the Board of Education meeting. Then we will turn our attention to action planning. And so our, our, our hope is that each year we will establish our action plan for the year, which aligns to the strategic plan and helps to move us forward. That plan will be discussed and then presented to the Board of Education in October. In future years, we would hope that we would be doing that work in September. But because of the way the strategic planning effort has wrapped up this year, we'll be presenting it this year in October. We then would like to develop our promotional campaign to build awareness of the plan and engage stakeholders in both understanding and living the plan. And finally, throughout this year, we really, once we have our action plan established, we want to begin to identify those key performance indicators for each goal area. Just to give you a quick sneak peek into what that might look like. First of all, the action plan, the planning that we will need to do really involves looking at each strategy and identifying the action steps and outcomes we hope to accomplish and what resources we have or may need to accomplish that strategy for the year. In looking at key performance indicators, this really is looking at the data we'll use, the evidence we'll use to monitor the success that we are having or the challenges maybe that we're having and accomplishing one of the strategies or action steps. And so for each goal and strategy, we hope to identify indicators, measures and targets and then align the data system, not only at the district level, but looking at departments and looking at school-based goals there as well. We hope to use the strategic management system dimensions to ensure that the strategic plan will serve our future direction. This is something we've heard a lot about from CEC. And so we've scheduled a meeting to follow up with our CEC facilitator to really discuss this and identify what our next steps will be there. It's an overarching system that really looks at how are we monitoring our success? Are we doing the right things now moving our district forward? It looks at eight dimensions of strategic management, including leadership, culture and values, strategic thinking and planning, alignment, performance, measures and management, process improvement and sustainability of the strategic, of strategic management, excuse me. Again, really just looking at, are we doing the right things and are we doing things right? Again, we expect that we will continue to progress, monitor and report to the board three times a year. And that each year we would develop an action plan for the year that would be monitored throughout. So I want to say thank you to the strategic planning team, but also to our entire community who engaged in this process throughout. We really received incredibly valuable feedback and insight and perspective. And that helped us to really refine our thinking about what, what is our mission, our vision and our core values? And how can we continue to serve our community well and build upon the successes of the past toward even greater successes in our future? So we are hoping that our new mindset leads to new results and we're eager to get started. With that, I would take feedback or questions from the board. I'll stop sharing our screen so that we can see each other. And everyone at home can see us. Thank you.
I just want to start by offering a huge thank you. I think tackling this in the midst of the COVID environment was really ambitious and represented a ton of work, I know for the committee, but especially for your team. And I think you're right that it was well worth the investment of time and energy. And I think it helped us on a much more proactive path of recovery and making the best use of good time as we move forward. So I promise that was a huge thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the whole team and our board member, fellow board members. That's the question. You know, I have a question, but I'm not sure the appropriate. The big one that I'm, is our board structure aligned to the goals? Really like goals.
And I'll, I'll add in thinking about that, that may be something, the board does host annual retreats. That may be a focus area that the board can wish to explore at one of this year's retreats. It's a great point of discussion for the board.
I rewrite what Amy thought and this year is remarkable and wonderful presentation. And I think from a higher level was, I didn't rate direction. I thought after seeing all of that was, it was a lot of us to hold ourselves accountable and have the board to feel like we've truly been successful and probably moved. So I will look forward to that as part of the next step. And if you were all aligned that amount of debt, you know, we're planning to have a sustainable, positive path.
Again, tremendous amount of work. A lot of, of. A lot of, of good presentations on, um, vision and, um, the high level things. As, um, Anne just mentioned, there's a little bit of a devil in the detail. As a planning document, well, actually, first off, it's one tactical thing. The, um, I, I found in the presentation, the, the next level detail that's on the slide was easy to follow and lots of little tidbits that it's hard to keep track of. So I really appreciate if the, the. Their most stripped, like if they were getting read off something. If the, the additional words that individuals presented, if we could get a, a hard copy of those times and look at them, so not wait until Friday or very soon. So. Because I think there's a lot of good information in that next level that isn't on slides. Um, so that would really help me in, in looking at. So the sooner we can get those, like the people reading, so hopefully we won't be overly critical if it's grammatical here. In that information, that would be a lot of active work.
So what they're working from is preliminary thinking around the action planning. And so those that first we need the strategic plan, the overarching goals to be approved. And then we turn our attention to the action planning. We've already started to think about that, but need the approval of the strategic plan first. We can certainly get you that verbiage, but just to set your mind at ease, that verbiage, once agreed upon, will be part of the action plan for this year. And that's what the team was referring to as their building out the action plan for this year. So that will also be a, a document that will be published and broadly communicated as we presented in October.
Right. And the, this document rightly is high level. But high level documents can sometimes be exclusive or exclusive. You know, there can be a high level phrase that excludes other things, or it can be a high level phrase that includes lots of things that can be done in the future. And it's a little difficult at this level without some examples of what's meant by the high level phrase, of which ways to interpret it. So as an example of how these could be interpreted, that answers that, that's one of the. So that, at the generic level, um, I had two specific things in the, the student achievement. We, we talked about differentiated instruction in the district for more than a decade. I know when I moved here, one of the things I did is I looked at the website. There's a two or three paragraph, you know, differentiate with instruction and the goals of the district. And I know it's been one of our goals and things we've talked about often. Um, so what I guess I'm questioning is, is this more than that? Is this just assuming that? Um, what, I mean differentiated instruction is, again, it's a phrase that could be expanded in lots of different ways. So. First off, to you and a little bit, how is this different than what we've been doing for the last?
I think it builds upon what we've been doing for the last ten years, and I'll give a kind of a brief view, and Katie, you can try and certainly if you'd like as well, having been here for those last ten years. I think one of the things we've heard from our team time and again is that we want rigorous learning experiences. And we also want to ensure that those strong foundational skills are present in each and every student. And so what we're recognizing is that through differentiated instruction, we want to make sure that we're really monitoring and adjusting our practices based on what we're seeing in the performance of our students. And so some of the examples that both Katie and Kelly provided are, are looking at the data in a, in a more intensive way and then planning for adjustments based on what the data are telling us. Um, we have spent the last couple of years really building our data systems to allow us to do that. And so now we're prepared to take those next steps to really dig in a little more deeply as we're coming out of COVID. Um, but also as we're simply taking the next steps on what has been a long process of differentiation. Katie?
Yes, the, uh, the only thing I would add, Carrie, is for us and why you've heard about differentiating instruction. For us, it's synonymous to teaching, so what our teachers do on a daily basis. And we would never want to, um, think that our practices are the best ten years ago to current. We would always want to improve that cycle. So it's really reflecting on how we teach, how we reach our students. And as you know, over the ten years, if you think back about some of the trends, the needs of our students have changed over time. And I think, um, you know, ten to fifteen years ago, some of the social emotional needs of our students currently were not as prominent back then, um, but now they are more pronounced. So those are the types of reflective cycles that we'd like to take in just improving teaching, which to us is synonymous to differentiating instruction.
The other thing I'll add is, um, we, the district as a whole has really focused a lot on, um, the growth of all students and, and a lot on our special education students and support services, as well as advancing the growth of our, our advanced learners. And so what we really now want to do is make sure that each and every student is growing. And by, by that, we recognize we need to provide some additional professional development for our staff and ensure that our staff are engaged in those later, you know, regular cycle kind of ways to make sure that they're.
What, what I'm, what I'm hearing is. Um, I'm not sure for the community and even for myself, that the way this is written gets that across. Differentiated instruction. The way this, the stra, the, the goal is, is, um, quite a strong foundation of rigorous faculty training that covers all the things that we've talked about. The, the strategies could be interpreted as limited, limiting. And also as written to me from across the process versus outcome. That it, we're going to improve the process of differentiation without statements on, and here's how we can identify it, record it, uh, document. You know, numerical improvements or whatever the next step is. I heard, I heard some of that in this and I heard some of that in the K P I. But the way this, these words are written here don't, don't hit that, I don't think. I think it's, it's, it, it definitely talks about the process of learning how to differentiate, making current teachers know how to differentiate. But it doesn't talk about, and the result of that will be. Some of the K P I's did, but as a strategy, it doesn't. You could interpret this as success would be that we taught people how to differentiate, whether it worked or not. And that's overexaggerating, but I, but I think the wording on this could be improved to make it a little clearer for the word.
So do you have a suggestion?
Well, some of the, the details that were talked about weren't, weren't in the field that I was reviewing this weekend, so I don't have my fingertips. But, but I think something that talks about outcome or outputs, not just process, in, in the plan. Again, it sounds like there's a lot of thought behind it. But if the plan is a document that people are going to be looking at, three years from now, the board is going to be looking at. This doesn't document that as well as, as some of the other words.
I think what you're looking for is the action steps and the, the key performance indicators, which aren't as part of C E C's process defined in the actual strategic plan. Those come as part of the annual action steps and.
Yeah, but I, I, I understand that and I don't have the words at my fingertips. I mean, I can work on that quickly, but I, I have a thought that, I think. Um, why not, want to do, I think Katie, Katie gets things, or potentially use the word. Use the word teach. This is good. I'm almost there. So, um, why don't we use the word teach? To support. Instead of differentiating. Or to ensure a strong.
So under strategy one, take out differentiate instruction and supports and simply say teach to ensure?
Yeah. I, I somewhat agree with Frank. You just said a differentiated instruction. To me, it's, I see how you guys are interpreting it as a super broad. But, um, I think you're also getting something that is limiting and sort of reached to the max.
I just want to speak as part of the committee and being on the calls that the attention to the language was so particular and gathered from an enormous amount of participants, including our educators. And I personally place a lot of value in that and that this is, um, I mean, the goal, the overarching goal. Decide differentiated education. And also as a teacher myself, I think it's, to me, it's the right phrase. Um, and it reflects what we heard from the community. I think, um, it is an evolving term that we, how people teach is we reach all your students. Is what, so to me, it's reflective of what is. What was actually happening.
Erin, give me just a second. I just want to jump in here for a second for a point of process. Right? That, that, you know, we've had multiple moments where we've asked for stakeholder and board input. And, um, so I want to say we're kind of really towards the end here because we literally were going back as a strategic planning team and asking people to respond to the feedback and then make last minute changes. So I feel like to start making changes at this moment doesn't feel like it's kind of the right moment in the process. The second piece is that, like you said, Frank, the devil's in the details. And strategic plans, where we are, is meant to be highly. And the action steps that are taken are really well thought out by the administrative team, which is where it belongs. And then that will give a real kind of feeling of kind of how it is that these strategies have been implemented. So I just want to caution this board about recommending significant changes to the plan at this time because that feels wrong, given the process and where we've asked for it. And the second is, I'd like us to just really look at the action steps. Um, because Frank, I think that'll answer the question.
The, the timing, I guess, would be the question. There's a lot of work, a lot of really good work. There were asking hundreds of people for data, of which you asked as individuals, the, the five or seven getting the five other people or the seven people on the board. And then there was an output, and now there's a request for a vote on the output. And we're talking now about how it was compiled. And I guess the question is, from a board standpoint, the two people that did a lot of work on the board were individuals. They were not the board.
No, but the board got multiple times to, to provide input on the draft, but I'm going to go to Ellen. She's been asking to talk. Go ahead, Erin. We'll get back to you.
You know, I have a general comment, but I'll just start off by saying quickly that I agree with Amy and Katie that the language should stay as differentiated, what that means as far as teaching. And I think we want to express what that means in this plan. Um, so I just want to say, this plan blew me away. I am so excited about it. As far as what we must become and who we are and why we exist, I love where we landed on this. And I think the goals and the priorities contained in the plan are exactly what they should be. And I love how, um, this plan provides a framework that addresses both the whole with its focus on community and culture and the individual that celebrates who they are and exactly what each kid needs. And I just want to offer huge thanks to everybody who participated. Um, and I particularly love that students and former students are part of this process. So thank you to everyone here who participated, anyone within the sound of my voice who participated. I just, um, think it's remarkable what has been produced so far.
Thank you, Erin. Frank, I want to go back to your point about how we measure. That is even after we get the action steps, there will be great detail spent and time on how we're going to measure. Right? And I, I just think that strategic plans are done in a methodical way. And what you're asking for is two steps back.
I, I understand, um, strategic plan process. I, I just want to make sure that there are books in here that allow for topics over the next five years that are important. And if the document is tricky to interpret with those books, then it could be, it could be limiting. And my suggestion was to try and, and look at the first goal in a way that makes sure that when people, one, two, three years from now, different administrators, different school board members, that we don't interpret the goal as limiting as opposed to you know, expanding, which is what we're, we're talking about because we're all excited about making sure that, that kids learn well. So my feedback wasn't on the process. My feedback was on the, the words that we ended up here and whether those words are as inclusive as we want them to be. Because we a lot of times put a hat on that the, the administrators and teachers are experts in your area. Um, and you know what differentiation means, but it's not necessarily. I just think that there could be some words missing, not changing words, not picking up differentiation, but making sure that this is inclusive, not.
Frank, are you worried? I just want to get to the point of you're worried. Are you worried that it's just representing kids who are struggling? Because I just want to clarify that differentiation doesn't.
No, I understand that. I.
So.
Okay, I, I.
I don't know how to solve the problem without the only theories that we're extending.
I wanted to keep it higher level, but there's been feedback. The most feedback that I've gotten, now I don't get everybody in the world talking to me, but the most feedback that I've gotten on the school board is that there hasn't been enough differentiation for kids that are doing well.
That's what I.
So, and this is, at this level, the same level as what's been there for ten years. So, like, so does rule this address that, you have to double in the details, but at the high level, it's really the same statement.
But just to say, it, it's to support a strong academic foundation of rigorous, meaningful, and growth-oriented experiences for all students.
Yeah.
To me, those words were very purposeful to include exactly what you're talking about, to, to represent all students.
And, and the goal, I, the goal was fine. My question is, are there more than one way to address? Well, and, and then there's the, you know, just in general, how is our academic performance of all of our children? Not just the top, not just are they being differentiated, but you know, is, is this a, a high performing school district compared to all other high performing school districts? Whatever that means, however that's reported. And this could be interpreted as, and the way we'll address that is by differentiation. And the question is, are there other things that we might need or want to be to maintain ourselves as a high performance district? Not just high performance compared to Illinois, but high performance compared to all PD districts, compared to all other high performance districts. Differentiation is a key part of that, but is that, but I just. It, differentiation is a key part of that, but is that, but I just wanna be clear, the hope that, as it's written here, doesn't say the only way we need to address that is through differentiation.
But Frank, you're the one putting those words in. We are telling you. Multiple people are telling me that it is a broad, all-encompassing statement. And we will see when the action steps are done, more detail.
Well, I also think if you look at the different strategies of number two, structured staff collaboration focused on rigorous achievement and growth for all students. I don't, I don't know what we could come up with that more broad and clear.
Okay, you're right. So, um, I mean, I, you know, being on the board for a while, I know what you mean by different, differentiated instruction. I just think it's a, a pretty technical term in the education world. So as someone who's not really part of the world, um, I mean, I honestly, it's, it's deep. Are you seeking feedback? You're getting it. So you're resisting it, that's fine. So we don't need to see the change. We've made it a thing, made it a form. And, um, great. There's the feedback.
I, I think that's fair. I think if there's, you know, common feedback with a preferred differentiation, that would be something for us to sit on. I don't at this point know what that would be and how the process would be to go back to that.
So there is no process to go back, right? We, again, we provided multiple moments for the board and others to have input and, and it, it would be, in some ways, kind of violating the process that we all look to. And so I guess I'd like to say, I, I recommend that we kind of close out this discussion, understanding Frank, your point. Um, understanding also that we all believe that your point is incorporated in the existing language. And that time will tell and you can bring it up as we continue on.
I, I got unfortunately more comments. So that was on this one. So I prefer to close out here.
Then please go ahead with your other comments. Let's move on though, Kim, this time.
That, that, that's true. Um. I don't know where it fits, um, and I don't know if it's, uh, intentionally excluded or it does fit someplace. But, um, one of the feedbacks when we had options that I personally know I brought up, um, was how can we do better? How can we stay leading at, you know, a high-performing school district? Are there things, and, you know, there's, I, I hesitate to get specific because the idea of it would be specific, but are there things that we could do along the edges that will make our students more engaged and better? And it's, it's, and here, we're, we're talking about in, in the including more like the classroom, but I'm, I'm thinking, and I've brought this up in the past, as examples, not as a definitive statement. But we, we know that there's, uh, twenty, thirty kids that, that are highly engaged in science. We know that Nutria has a regional, if not national quality, science olympiad. We know that most of the kids on the Nutria don't come from the last, even though we're the largest school district, they come from school districts that put more resources on science. It may or may not be an appropriate thing. It doesn't mean we change daily classes. It does fall under the, you know, as a board who wanted to allocate, who wanted to allocate funding for a half-time dedicated science olympiad to make that a stronger effort for the community members that have that interest. Where do those type of topics come up?
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. Um, so under goal number two, strategy number two. Um, here, I can put it up on the screen. Let me see if I can, uh, present and share my screen. Okay. Um, strengthen a sense of belonging, engagement, representation, and agency for students through diverse welcoming opportunities for community building, leadership, and student-to-student connections. That really is focused on all of the opportunities that exist within our schools for students to lead and engage and be involved within our schools. So it may be science olympiad, it may be other extracurricular opportunities after school, clubs, it may be opportunities within the school day. And the staffing portion of your comment really is addressed in that goal five, in the second strategy there. I can move us forward if you'd like.
That, that was the place that I thought it might fit, but a-again, there's a point of goal being high level and there's a little bit of, and again, there's a lot where we use the buzzwords and the knowledge base of the experts. And it doesn't easily translate to not experts. Like, you know, what you just said, I, when we say it, is a way that these things could be interpreted or not? And I, I understand now what you're thinking, but I'm not sure that's well represented in the words on the paper.
And it probably isn't because that would come out through the action plans each year of us evaluating, are we making progress and what are the next steps for us to take? Those are the, the annual action steps and then the key performance indicators as opposed to the big vision of what we're trying to accomplish. So there's like that big umbrella vision and mission and the goals, and then what are we doing to accomplish that is, is really, those details, I think, Frank, that you're, you're looking for.
And I, I'm just, I mean, even for, as a school board member, I'm not as aware of that the nuances that the dedication of community has and the professionalism that we have. I'm thinking from the next step out, that the average parent that didn't need a hundreds of hours on this committee, when they read the, will they be excited or will they look at it and say, these are things that I think is important, that isn't even allowed? And, and that's not what we need, but do we, does this represent that to the average person, let alone the average cat player that doesn't have kids, or probably just parents? But certainly the average parent. Will, will this get across the point that you just made or will this be so high level that they say, well, okay? Or, hey, the thing I really care about, they're not gonna be because it's not. That's the word slipping that, that I think that that's the point. And I know there's been a lot of work on it, but there's been a lot of work by people that are very knowledgeable. And there's a question, whether this, some of these words could be added to a little bit or tweaked a little bit, that's a little bit more understandable to the person that's helping them a lot of times.
Frank, I just, a couple of thoughts here and then I'll go around the horn. So this, I, I think in the first couple of slides that Dr. Kremescolli went ahead and did, she showed you that it wasn't just educators. There were just as many non-educators on the teams as there were educators. We do luckily have a communication expert and what I heard in Dr. Kremescolli's presentation today was that we're gonna go ahead and do a communications campaign about the, um, plan. And again, I'm, I'm just gonna say, it, it, the ship has sailed when it comes to words missing because this is not a document. The strategic plan is high level and it allows for room over the next five years to make changes, but it doesn't represent the will of every person. It represents the collective will. It represents what we learned in the data retreats. And it's focused on the priorities. So if somebody's interested in, in science olympia, that isn't going to ever be represented in the strategies, right? And not everything the district does is represented in the five strategies and it doesn't mean we don't do that. And so I am sure that when we roll out the communications for this strategic plan, that we will be very clear about what the plan is, which is a prioritization document over the next five years. And it reflects a consensus of the people on the committee, not any one person's priorities. Does that help? Um, Amy, go ahead.
I, I was hearing something different and, or similar, uh, but what I was thinking of when you were talking, our need moving forward to really communicate the difference between the plan, that the strategic plan and the year-to-year action plan with some examples so that people understand that they're not, this is not at the exclusion of specific exciting possibilities, but this is a higher order strategic planning and that soon to come will be the action plan on a yearly basis with particular initiative. And that that may help those who are not on that community understand what's at stake.
I think, I think that would be valuable. Um, again, a strategic plan that opening as opposed to a strategic plan that's tricky is, is important. And I know that was, the intent was to make it opening. The communication should need to make that clear so that, that it doesn't look as like the, not even the detail. Again, science olympiad was purely representative of example. Um, I can give you six or seven more if you want more of that stuff right now. Um, and Lisa, just, don't, don't tell me that the ship has sailed and that's what's going on this. Those are two different statements. We had input as individual board members, you were individual board members, you did not speak for the entire board, that that's the way the word is set up. Two people, everybody is an individual. We're not gonna change everything here, but to say that it's already too late to even have a discussion on it, I think is an appropriate thing to then say, now let's vote on it.
I'm not asking for a vote today, Frank, and what I'm telling you is, you're bringing issues and what I'm saying, there were times earlier in the process for me to bring this up because the strategies, this isn't the first day we're seeing.
And, and I did bring some of these up in the past and they were put into the, you know, not enough consensus. So we're being asked to vote on something. Or, if it was, this is the strategic plan and we'll vote on the action plan? That, but to say this is the strategic plan, it's been, it's been fully vetted and, you know, now rubber stamp it. I, I think, I'm not saying that this is wrong or bad, but to say that it's already too late to have a discussion and now let's go on it.
No Frank, we're having a discussion. You're asking that one person's request to wordsmith override months of collective discussion. That's what you're asking and I'm saying that is a violation of the intent of the plan. And I'm also telling you directly that there were other times that it was totally fine and appropriate to ask for changes. And this, and, and so, go ahead Erin.
You know, I was just gonna say, I don't know if this is gonna lay your fears at all, um, but when I read the document, I read it as an open document. Um, Dr. Kremescolli already talked about where that might fit. There was language about, I mean, talk about science olympiad, which I don't think should specifically be in this plan, but I think it's covered by implication. If we're talking about nurturing creativity, curiosity, and risk-taking in a student. A student who is creative, curious, and takes risks is probably someone who might join the science olympiad because those competencies would be um, exercised through that, um, participation in that club. So I don't see this as limiting at all. I see it as opening um, all sorts of opportunities for our kids. Um, so maybe it's just we're looking at it differently.
And I think the discussion was fine to what you just said. And that's part of why I'm bringing some of the discussion is to get that next level of detail. Because that isn't completely obvious in the words that we've done. I mean, it was good that we're having this discussion because all the words that I'm hearing in the discussion make the powder of this document. But I was just trying to point out that the document.
I will just add that, um, throughout the process, we have had some discussion at the board table and I know that the board's feedback has gone through um, both Lisa and Amy to the team. I've been in those discussions where they have represented, um, Frank, your desire to ensure that all students are being challenged, including our students who, uh, may need some support and those were our advanced partners. They've also represented your desire to ensure that all students are being measured and monitored in their performance and in their success to ensure that, um, each student is grown. And so that really, I think, is reflected here. And I, and I think that was represented, um, your comments in particular were represented by both Lisa and Amy in, in those discussions to ensure that we do have that rigorous approach to both the foundations of learning as well as those more advanced ones.
I just wanted to say that, um, I'm a little disappointed with, um, some of the comments that I heard at this meeting. I mean, the, the strategic plan was, was brought up today so that we could discuss it, you know, in advance of, um, formally taking a vote on it next week. And this would be the opportunity to bring up comments. And if there is no opportunity to hear them, you know, then maybe you shouldn't have, um, presented it today and just presented it so that we could just, uh, rubber stamp it. But, um, and, you know, listening to some of Frank's comments kind of helped me shape my thinking, which is, yes, that a, a lot of the things that you were addressing will come out in the annual action plans. And so that was really great. Anyways, that's my comment.
I just wanna be clear, I agree with you. This was not my intention to shut down the discussion. There's discussion and there's requests for changing the words. And I'm defending the word, not the difference.
And I think that was a really great point, um, to, to sort of reflect that on not really where it takes place and it wasn't just like, sort of like this. You know, that somebody wrote down the first thing that popped into their head. But I think that some, I mean, I, I, I don't know if I'm reading you correctly, but that some of your thoughts were really on implementation.
Yeah. The, the words that we've said around this are encouraging. The, but, you know, words without understanding the next act step is tricky. And that's what I was trying to have as a question. What, what do these words mean? Cause a lot of these words are high level and or internal. And they were picked very carefully, but that also means sometimes that they have specific details meaning to people that know what they mean and not necessarily is obvious meaning to people that don't. So, and that, that's why I wanted to make sure I understood that, while I was critiquing the those selected words that were mentioned that were not assigned, but I think those are very, very important.
I, I hope that Lisa's clarification is helpful. I agree, I think that conversation needs to be genuine, um, and important. And that it's not about wordsmithing, it's about direction.
So, I, I'm, at the risk of offending anyone at the table, um, I, I do hear the concern about monitoring this class of all students and that, um, the worry might be that that's not reflected within the verbiage that is offered here, especially in the goal one. And so I'll, I'll just, um, offer that I think the team intended, um, in the multiple places where we talk about ensuring and providing data-informed practices, that is where we believe that too have been reflected. But I do wonder if, um, under goal one, strategy one, if we add the word monitor, which I think is what Frank might be trying to get at, that better reflects the discussion that the board is having at this table right now. And again, I'm, I'm not trying to override any, having gone through all of the wordsmithing time and time again. Um, I, I certainly don't want to do that. Um, but I, I hear the concern about monitoring. So while we thought that was well reflected in the data-informed practices, that's what we intend to mean. I think what, uh, the group is bringing up is, um, a nod toward monitor, that success now going away. And so, um, I'm gonna share my screen and, and just ask for consensus on, um, on that. So this is goal one and the strategies associated.
Can you say again what you're considering recommending?
Under strategy one, if to ensure and monitor a strong academic foundation of challenging, meaningful and growth oriented experiences for all students. Again, I think the team might reflect that that feels a little redundant from the other elements in language that has been chosen throughout the strategic plan, the actual strategies and goals that are identified. However, I'm hearing Frank's concern and I'm hearing also some acknowledgement from other board members. So trying to find some consensus because I am exceptionally proud of this plan and I feel very certain that this will help to move us forward, especially knowing the action steps on an annual basis that we intend, that that process that is intended throughout this. But I want to honor everyone's feedback. And so it's a suggestion I'm making available if there was consensus.
Where are you putting the word monitor?
To ensure and monitor under goal one, strategy one.
That address the issue?
I would appreciate that. I think redundancy, if it helps clarify, is useful. And so I think that that would be, it would add some clarity and that would add.
I'm not opposed at all. I think that's fine. I think strategy two so speaks to what you're looking for that it's hard for me to see how this would be limiting, but I think it's rather. I, part of it is I know that that's what you're looking for is a hundred percent of the goal of every, every goal from the plan. So if there's a way to better represent it, that's fair.
Ensure already encapsulates it, but I'm not opposed to having monitor.
Okay, monitor is. Okay, well, we're biased then to add the word and the two words in monitor. And again, there has been a lot of wordsmithing. So we'll make sure that the board has the final plan with the verbiage that has been suggested and revised as of the most recent meeting, which was on Tuesday. And we'll also make sure that the board has the talking points that were added. Again, that will come out in the published documents of the action plan, which will be presented in October. But we knew that this is high level. And so as we're talking about, what does that actually mean? We wanted to give the board and the committee a vision, a look into what that actually means, what's, what action steps will be taken. And so we're happy to provide you with that, that language as well.
I understand why that doesn't give the plan, but it does help understand the plan for.
I want to see, I don't know your time and where you are with that planning. So I think you asked me for it in writing. I want to make sure you all get ready. I know it wouldn't be in the plan, but if you're actually, if you want to share the.
Just the talking points that people were speaking from.
A lot of extra words. I don't want to talk about it. It's a hard, but everybody had a script and, you know, some version of that script was available. I thought there's a lot of.
It's probably more like bullet points, but we will get you what we have so that you can reflect on that. And we.
Extra work.
Yes.
And I guess is the clarification that they're not talking about, but that step of it is built and grounded.
Absolutely. Yeah, those were.
I want to make sure that nobody's expecting that those ideas are.
No, in fact, we felt, we felt very much that we couldn't do the finalized action planning until we received the board's approval on the strategic plan. And so those are some preliminary thoughts. We can get you those thoughts. I will tell you, I don't have a script that I'm speaking from. I'm actually just speaking from the slides. But I do know that we have some bullet points and so we can, we can certainly get those to you and should be able to by the end of the day tomorrow, along with the revised and final verbiage for the plan. Because as we were talking, I realized that some people are talking from a slightly earlier version before that final team meeting. And so we'll make sure that everyone has what's been presented today with those two extra words added in, which is in fact reflective of what we hope to propose to the board.
Can I just make a quick, I'm sorry, I don't have all of the slides in front of me. I'm now looking at goal one. And this is my lawyerly comment, which is that if you include and monitor in the first goal, you might want to look at all the other goals. Just make sure that, you know, the inclusion of it in one goal and the, not inclusion of it in others. That's my point. And my, my second very point would be that I don't think it's necessary to make that change. But again, I would.
So Bonnie, would you, would you agree with your first statement, knowing that it's not, I think it's not in the actual goal, right? It's in the strategy.
Oh, well, what I meant was that, you know, we would have to look from each side just to make sure that.
I guess, so I want to hear and use what you're saying, but I think it's okay that it's just there because it's, it's so particular to that one strategy under that one goal. Do you feel like that's.
I mean, I don't have anything in front of me.
Okay.
There's a couple of other goals to mention. Something like you said, it's redundant. A couple of other goals or strategies under these, some that are monitored or words like that.
I think, let me, I closed out just because I wanted to have a few different slides, which is our vision, which is really what I think Bonnie is getting at, the overarching thoughts here. And again, the team, as they were looking at this, were looking at cultivating growth as part of the vision and under engaged learning, ensuring a strong foundation. I think the ensuring word was intended to convey that regular and ongoing monitoring across all of the goals.
I mean, maybe my point was that I'm not sure that that language is that the ad today.
So I need consensus then from the board, whether we're adding and monitor or not.
Maybe we should vote on it.
We can't actually vote. I need direction and then we'll vote. Really what you're directing me to do is to bring forward the version that will be voted on. And so I will either bring forward the version that includes and monitor and you vote on that, or I bring forward the version that does not include and monitor. And anyone can, if the action item doesn't pass the vote, then they could suggest a revision to that action item at the Monday board meeting. And that could either add or delete the and monitor phrase.
Thank you.
I like the change.
I'll be clear, it's the strategy under the.
Get all the strategy.
I'm finding it.
Same. I think ensure, I said, encapsulates it, but I'm not opposed to getting and monitor.
I think it adds, it adds a little value, so I think.
Okay, then I will bring forward the and monitor and the team can revise if they, if it doesn't pass in the first recommended version. Okay. And I do think, to everyone's point, a little redundant, but if it adds value to some, to understand, I think it's okay to add that phrase. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the discussion, the feedback and the opportunity to explain in greater depth, not only the overarching plan, but our next steps in action planning and in creating key performance indicators that will help us monitor our success.
So before we close it out, are there other comments that did not mean you put a chilling effect on discussion? Again, it was more about processing words. Nothing will I apologize if that's how people felt or enjoyed the thought. So with that being said, are there other thoughts that people want to bring forward?
Right. I do think we should think about the board structure. I'd like to know what you're thinking. Process, if you guys can give that some, if you have already.
John, can you?
That I like the idea. I mean, I think we probably need a board retreat. We have a number of people who are involved. So that's probably something we could talk about and that would be a lot of the place to think about.
John, what are you, what?
Oh, okay.
I mean, just.
Yeah, I know. I got it. So there are.
Maybe just question, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need the committee? No. Because a lot of these goals don't really relate to community. But they're very important goals. Our structure should mirror what the business goes by. So that's the big picture.
So maybe the idea of pursuing a board retreat, will we think about those?
That's a great idea and I think that's something we can pursue in the next couple of months. So I will reach out to your, the board's representative through IASB and seek some options for a board retreat specifically to focus on living the plan and leadership for the plan, which sounds like it's really where you want to focus. Honey, back over to you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, everyone. We will now have public comments, which will be accepted in person and remotely via Zoom. Do not see any community members in person. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay. So if you are on Zoom, please state your name and community of residence for three minutes. And as a reminder, please turn on your camera as well as your audio.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. My name is Mary Lawler and I am with the League of Women Voters of Willmet. One of the league's focus areas for 2021 to 2022 is community education, engagement, good governance. And part of that focus area is to advocate for open and transparent government bodies. I'm chair of that focus area and I am speaking this morning in that capacity, specifically with respect to District 39's lack of transparency with respect to Cal meeting materials, including what your agenda referred to as the 2021 to 26 strategic plan final draft, which we heard a lot of this morning, whether that was actually final or not, but which was not posted on Board Docs Public View or on the district's strategic planning webpage. I appreciate that. There was a lot of discussion of the engagement with the community on the strategic planning process. And I agree in the spring, there was a lot of, that webpage was a wealth of, had a wealth of information and was really good at keeping up with what the team was doing. But it hasn't been updated since June. And that webpage still says, coming in August 2021, stakeholder engagement for final review and feedback. The league has long advocated for the District 39 BOE to make its committee of the whole documents public. We were encouraged with a demonstration at the August Cal of the new Board Docs Public View, when several Cal documents were posted to Board Docs for that meeting. Perhaps maybe that was just for demonstration, but we were hoping that would be a new process going forward. We were disappointed for this meeting, however, when the strategic plan draft was not posted, even though it was on the agenda for discussion by the Cal. You cannot get engaged in informed public comment on a document when you do not post it prior to the meeting in which board members will discuss it. Waiting to post meeting information on voting items until the Friday before the board meeting at which it will be voted on, which is often the case for this board, is not nearly as useful for getting public input because by the time items get to the BOE for vote, passage is often a fait accompli. In the interest of transparency, we request that, okay, that you update the strategic planning website as soon as possible, including putting this draft on and in the future, making Cal media materials public on Board Docs. Thank you very much, all of you, for your service to the community.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Do you have anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. So we will turn to old business. You know, we have one item, which is our board tours this evening.
Yes, in fact, two items I'll make mention of if I, the board would allow. One is the board tours of Mackenzie and Ramona schools. The board has been invited to join us in these tours this evening. And we're excited to have the opportunity to tour that agenda is posted online for those interested in seeing that. But it really is simply a tour of the buildings. And I think we have four board members who will be joining us. So thank you so much for those board members who were taking the time out of their evening to visit our schools after hours. Thank you. I'll also mention, as we've discussed, in October, we have a couple of things on the agenda planned for. One is following the strategic plan approval, we will present the action plan in October. And so we're looking forward to being able to do that. We also are planning for a review of the support plan for student learning this year, which will address, I think, Frank, some of what you have requested in terms of the learning recovery and what the, what the district's plans are to support learning recovery for, for any students who may need that. We'll be talking a little bit about our, our current plans and what is typically part of our process for intervention in recovery in any year. There are often reasons a student may need some intervention or support to continue to grow. And then we'll also talk about any new additions that will be part of this school year in light of the pandemic. And so our team is preparing a presentation to discuss that, including use of SRR funds in support of the strategic plan as well as learning recovery as is required by those dollars. And the other mention I would like to just make to the board, you'll remember pre-pandemic, we, the board contracted with Atlantic Research Partners to conduct a review of our special education services and programs. We were just launching that in February and March, right as the pandemic was also taking hold of our community. And so we needed to place that review on hold. And we're excited to be relaunching that effort now. Staff are receiving communication regarding this. It will involve not only an in-depth review of all data of the district related to this specific portion, but also school visits and observations as well as interviews with staff and with students and with parents as well. So it's a really in-depth review. You might remember that. If not, I would encourage you to look back at the Atlantic Research proposal so that you can really understand what that all entails. But we're really excited about the opportunity to have this study done. And we believe it aligns very well with this new strategic plan and our efforts toward action planning moving forward.
Is it?
Yeah, I'll reach out to IASB on behalf of the board to schedule a board retreat. And, oh, sorry, I should also just mention, related to Board Docs, we continue on this path towards full implementation in January of use of Board Docs. So certainly those improvement efforts will continue moving forward.
Can I just give you a quick feedback on that?
Sure.
I love it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
I move to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Do you have a second?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Yay. Motion carries by general consent and the time is nine fifty-three AM.